Everyone, I'd like to welcome you here this morning to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review somewhere. I don't see them right now, but they'll be available for review down at the end at some point. And Craig and Carol are here if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from April 16, 2019.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $2,462,693.77.
Madam Chair, let's pay the bills.
Okay.
Second.
This is motion and a second. Any comments?
I'd just like to remark on a couple of the bills. One is that $2 million of this, $2,015,000, is part of our ongoing construction projects, and so that's the majority of this. And also, I'd point out that we had a number of bills for $420 for paying electric bills for folks who are facing shut-off. It's something that we take, try to take care of. $420 in a year is the most we'll do for any single person. And Carrie was telling me, Carrie Benz, who's here, that we, they oftentimes have bills of a couple of thousand, and so we're not paying the whole bill, but we're trying to prevent them from being shut off. And we also had a couple of funerals for $5,000 total, and I think those are, people don't always appreciate all the things that the county is involved in, and these are just some.
Any other comments? I appreciate those comments. I know every, I mean, still, every week when I go through our bills, that I learn things about county operations and the important work that we're doing day in and day out. And so I appreciate you bringing attention to those. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are reports. There's several reports there that I would recommend that you all look at. For those in the public, we have the Minnehaha County Abandoned Cemetery Board Minutes for October 2018, the Minnehaha County Weed and Pest Board Minutes for April 2019, the Juvenile Detention Center Report for March 2019, and the Human Services First Quarter Report for Minnehaha and Lincoln County. All reminders of the important and very diverse work that goes on here at the county. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item are abatements. First, we'll do the abatements recommended for approval. Olivia?
Yes, we have two sections. So the first is Item A, Kingdom Boundaries Prison Aftercare Ministries, Inc., Parcel 34105, 2017 Property Tax Exemption in the Amount of $3,840.27.
I'll make a motion to give that abatement.
Second.
Is there a motion and a second? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. If you want to do the assessment freezes?
Yes. B through F are all for the assessment freeze, 2018 property taxes. The first is Parcel 12091 in the Amount of $974.79. The second is Parcel 30843 in the Amount of $452.34. The next is Parcel 40000 in the Amount of $898.81. The next is Parcel 46088 in the Amount of $1,241.83. And the final one is 67707 in the Amount of $163.06.
I'd make a motion to approve those. I do have a comment.
I'll second.
Do a second. I have a question.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, a comment and a question. We'll start with the comment first.
Sometimes I think with our citizens, there's a little confusion about this because I recently had an interaction with a citizen who couldn't understand why his valuation was staying the same, but his taxes went up. And when we do the freeze, it freezes the valuation, not your taxes. And so that's what happened to him, and he couldn't understand it.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Karski?
These, my understanding are all elderly freezes, correct? Okay. And the one, you know, their comment down there that they were hospitalized and they missed the application deadline. There's no way to go back on that? Is there anybody that can answer that?
Yeah, Chris, Lilo Equalization Office. Yeah, there's a provision in the law for elderly frees, also for disabled vets. It's two of the laws that hold in the codified law that if you would have been eligible, you met all the criteria, but you missed the deadline, that they can petition the Board of County Commissioners for either an abatement or a refund of property taxes. So there is a deadline, April 1, for the elderly frees, but there really isn't a deadline. If they miss it, if by April 1, we can get it pushed in, if they miss it, then we can go through the abatement process.
So this individual could go back and ask for one for the prior year, too, yet, at this point?
These should be it. This is the one year they missed. Generally, they miss, and then we catch it and we do the abatement. And if we miss, then we catch it and do the abatement. But otherwise, I believe it's three years we can go back.
Okay.
Maggie might be able to answer more to that. On the elderly frees, I believe it's three years. So if they missed it for four years, hopefully, we would have caught it at that point in time. But I believe the law is three, unless there's other provisions out there, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, I think I still need a motion.
Move for approval.
Maybe we did. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to the next item, which is abatements recommended for denial.
Yes, there are two recommended for denial. They are both for Trent and Tammy Baumgartel for Parcel 85978. The first is 2017 property taxes in the Amount of $1,060.82. And the second is 2018 property taxes in the Amount of $1,101.38.
I have a question, if I may. Now, Chris, would you outline what the requirements are for you to be able to approve this abatement? You had to recommend denial. What would it take for you to recommend approval of this?
Yeah, on this one here, the reason I've recommended denial of this is because an application was not made. We need an application. Anytime there's a new house, there isn't any previous history of being owner-occupied. It's kind of a threefold part. If I bought a house from you and you were previously owner-occupied, when that transfer occurs on that PT-56 form, that real estate certificate of value, it comes over and asks, is the property currently owner-occupied? Yes or no? Yes. Will you occupy that property? Yes or no by November 1? Is it going to be your principal place of residence? If yes, then that owner-occupied, it doesn't require an application. That continues and it moves forward. If it's a new construction or a property that was not previously owner-occupied, the only way to start owner-occupied classification is by application. This particular property, the owners owned the land. There was no house to be owner-occupied. A house was built on it. It's brand-new. There's no previous to carry forward. So in that instance, we require a application. It's in the codified laws. They have to own it by November 1. They have to occupy it by November 1. It has to be their principal place of residence, and they can only claim one property for owner-occupancy. This one was not made. Our office in January, so November 1, they have to own, occupy, principal residence. They actually have until March 15 of that following year to make application for that year. The reason the March 15 is by law, I have to give out their assessment notices by March 1. They get their assessment notice, they look at it and say, oh, my goodness, I'm not owner-occupied. You have two more weeks to come into our office or file application. We've never received one. We actually mailed them one out in January, never received it back. These applicants then came to me, asked, and I said, the only course of action they have to get any recourse for these two years is to go through the abatement, and I informed him that I would recommend denial as, I can't give something I don't know. We don't have it. We've scoured our records to see. I asked the applicant if he had a copy, because when we get an application in, especially in office, we stamp it, "Received," and the date, we make them a copy to give back to them for their records. Did not have one. He says they dropped one off at our office. His wife did. She's really unclear what office, and actually at the city, I heard her say she dropped it at City Hall. I can't say if she did or didn't, but it never made it to our office. And I can't grant something or approve something I'm unaware of, so.
To follow up to that, we talked, the prior abatements that we approved, there was recourse to go back.
And that's why we're doing the two years. That's when the house came into existence. So the 2017 would have been the first year the house was done, then 2018. We do have him applied for 2019 taxes due and paid in '20. So we're within two years.
But you can't go backwards.
Had we gone back, say, we could have gone back and requested '16, '17, and '18. We would not have been able to request '15. That would have been four years then, had that house existed then, so.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Chris, I think I've seen this happen before, and it often happens when people own some vacant land and build a house.
Yes.
You know, if you commonly have a Realtor involved in this kind of stuff, we don't miss the homeowner's paperwork.
Yes, I would agree. Whenever there's a Realtor or abstract company involved, typically, they will inform the property owner, hey, you're buying this. Make sure you go down and make application. When we have somebody that owns a lot prior and then builds a house a year, two, three years later, there isn't that catch. Now, it just simply goes into a construction loan right with the bank. There isn't a new closing. There's no deed for the house. The deed comes with the land. So there is a lapse, and we do our best, and I will try to make further steps as the director here, to take some further steps to try and catch those types of situations. But again, on this one, you can only lead them so far. It's the homeowner's responsibility to be educated and knowledgeable to make application. And in this instance, we actually mailed this applicant one out in January, I think it was January 20, and never received it back. So I don't know what more we can do. 7,000 transfers a year, 4,500 of them are potentially owner-occupieds. I mean, that's a lot of people to go out and lead for our offices. And we do the best we can, so.
Any other questions? Chris, I just have one question. So you mentioned that there's this, you know, March 15 deadline to give people an opportunity. When they're looking at their assessment notice, what is it that they look for to make sure that they have owner-occupied?
It should have an S. I wish there was something different. It's an S classification. So we only have two classes of property in the state. You're either non-egg or you're egg. So when you look at your assessment cards, it will start with an NA or an AG for starters. Anything with just letters, you know, an AGA, an AGD, an NAD, that is land. Anything that has a numerical in it, that means a structure. So an NAD1 would be a non-egg structure. And if we have the S behind it, that signifies that that property is owner-occupied. I wish there was some other way. I wish it would spell it out. I believe this year's on our assessment notices, Dawn had put that on there and actually spelled out owner-occupied. If it doesn't say that, then you're not. But again, you have to meet the criteria. You have to own it, occupy it as of November 1, principal residence, and you can only claim it on one property.
So you think going forward that it is going to actually spell out in English where people can?
I'm hopeful. This year, it did. It actually spelled it out. So I'm hopeful going forward as we transition into software is that I can continue that. I'll try and make that. The S is very, you know, in my world, we know that's what it means. We try and educate and tell people, any public forum or the meetings, we tell them, this is owner-occupied, but to the common homeowner, they may or may not know that.
Commissioner Karski?
I guess what I'm concluding is that state statute says that for the elderly, there is recourse to go back.
Correct.
But for the owner-occupied?
There is not.
There is no recourse?
No.
For you to go back. And really, for us, we can't go around state statute.
Correct.
So that's why we are where we are.
I mean, you have the power, you have the authority as the board to approve this if you wanted to. I'm recommending you don't.
Because it would be?
It basically violates the codified law.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to Commissioner Karski there.
Okay, Commissioner Barth.
You know, one thing about the elderly frees is that you have to do it every year because you might have, your finances may have changed. You do your owner-occupied, and it's a one-time deal. And I think oftentimes with the elderly, they don't remember they're in the hospital, they're in Arizona, they're in Italy. I don't know. The point being, though, that it is a little bit harder to do it every year. And there is certainly a great benefit to being owner-occupied.
Yeah, that is absolutely correct. With the owner-occupied, once you make application, you meet the criteria. You are until that property changes ownership or something, or a classification change that causes it for review. It continues one time, done. You have it until you sell, so.
Any other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to deny the applications there for the Baumgartels.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi, Berger. Oh, sorry, not here. Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
And Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is notices and requests. There are none. Next item, planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien. There are none. So that brings us to the opportunity for a public comment. I believe there are some people here who'd like to speak on an item that is not otherwise on the agenda, and I'd welcome them to come forward. If you just identify yourself, give your name and address. That'd be great.
I'm Pam Taylor Janson. I live at 5,000 South Sunnymead Circle in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and I'm currently the president of the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. I know that you had an agenda at your last meeting that was pulled. They wanted it to come before the arboretum board first. We had a very rousing discussion last Thursday about the idea of granting three easements on county land. And in 2008, we had a joint agreement between the city, the county, and the arboretum, recognizing the land that was then called Parapazoo, that they would, at one time, need an emergency ingress and egress. And for that, they would give us just compensation. Well, now, they want three emergency, or egresses. And it's all in the county's hands right now. They want to take a private road up through the Prairie Nature Center for one man, so he can have a leisurely drive along the creek and take his construction equipment up that road and build his house. We actually, in 2017, when they came, when he came out and asked for that easement, we told him no. In attendance at that meeting was Scott Anderson, Don Kearney, Lori Kiso, who was executive director at the arboretum at that time, and myself. And we offered him an alternate route. We thought it was over and finished, and now they have come back with the same route that he wants to do through the Prairie Nature Center. I did my due diligence. I found a plan for that area that was done in 2002, and it talked about acquiring these three lots that are in contention right now, and also an easement through the homeowners, Bill of Homeowners Association, and land on the other side of those three lots. Well, Mr. Torgelson from Lloyd Construction has now a contract for deed on those three lots. So he's holding us hostage to build his road. And Coin Bank now, which owns that property, has given away anything that they could negotiate with us for compensation for their ingress/egress emergency access. What I'm telling the county is that you guys are in the driver's seat. You own all of that land. So it is up to you whether you're going to vote yea or nay. And the city would like you to do it all or none. All three easements or none. And I think you have the right to divide those easements. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, the one thing I did want to show you, and I'm sure you all take the argus, that once an easement is granted, it's in perpetuity. And now, the city, who paid $27 million for the land down by the railroad, has a Verizon easement that they don't know what they're going to do with. It's 30 feet wide. So sometime, you have to realize that once those easements go in, there's no going back, and they can do whatever they want on those easements. So I'm asking you to consider thoughtfully when this issue comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm Mary Ellen Conley. I live at 25 South Riverview Heights. I'll try not to repeat what Pam has said. The, let's see, let me find my place here. I'll say Coin Bank and Mr. Torgelson are using three lots next to county property, the Prairie Nature Center, as leverage to get an easement for a driveway through the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum in East Sioux Falls historic site to a future home for Mr. Torgelson. On one map, this is labeled as Lloyd Private Drive. They also want an emergency access easement in order to develop another 18-plus acres between Arbor's Edge and the arboretum. Pam mentioned a third easement, which I'm not addressing here, just these two easements. The driveway easement is on county's Prairie Nature portion of the arboretum. The 500-feet portion of your property is just part of the driveway. The driveway actually goes much farther beyond that. In trade for Mr. Torgelson's driveway and the other emergency easement, Mr. Torgelson would donate three parcels that have historically had no economic value for development. They do have value to the city for a future bike trail. In my opinion, the sit, siding of the arboretum about 10 years ago near these parcels actually creates much of the value they now have. The presence of the arboretum also adds value to Arbor's Edge and the other 18-plus acres they want to develop. Coin Bank and Mr. Torgelson, in my opinion, are capitalizing on the very value that the arboretum has created in those parcels. Mr. Torgelson wants an approximate 500-foot easement for his driveway, replete with five, replete, I want to emphasize that, with 500 feet of prime creekside frontage. It's a luxurious site teeming with possibility, and he wants to turn it into a driveway. It's one of the prettiest and most valuable parts of the arboretum, also the path of a popular hiking trail. It's on the portion of the arboretum that is owned by the county and maintained by the city. There is a high bank on the south side of this creek, and no soil tests have done, have been done to even assure its stability. He has chosen this particular location because he wants it. He'd rather drive through the arboretum to a future home because it is a prettier and more serene drive along a lovely creek than the supposed longer route past all those houses in Arbor's Edge. There is already access through Arbor's Edge to Mr. Torgelson's proposed building site. A simple bridge over the little creek or a culvert would connect him. He doesn't need to go through the arboretum to get his future building site. He just wants it. However, the arboretum has the only location for emergency access. This, without this emergency access, they will not be able to further develop this additional 18-plus acres between Arbor's Edge and the arboretum. I do have a little note here that the, how it's, it's kind of a coincidence that Arbor's Edge is named Arbor's Edge because it's next to the arboretum. The original request for emergency easement, well, Pam already covered that part, so I'm not going to say that. So what are we missing here? The emergency access to make possible 18-plus acres of Arbor's Edge housing development, about 24 parcels, is worth many times more than what the three lots that they're donating are worth. According to 2010, and I'm sorry I haven't looked up the current assessment, that in 2010, these three lots were assessed at an average of about $13,000. The county holds all the cards, and there are other ways for the city to obtain the three parcels for a bike trail. Most importantly, we and you must consider our donors and arboretum members, the same ones who frequent the hiking trail where Mr. Torgelson offers his driveway, plus enjoy all the other amenities of this very special nature area. We rely heavily on our donors, big time. We started with a small group, Sioux Falls Beautiful, of which I am a founding member. Sioux Falls Beautiful was founded by our mentor, Tom Killian, I'm sure of whom all you know, or knew. And Tom, and Mary Jo Wagner was also a member. Her family pledged $1 million to start the arboretum part of the Sioux Falls Park System after her death, and since then, thousands of other donors and volunteers have signed on. How will our donors view giving away a prime property? Will they continue in our shared dream of a Sioux Falls Park System arboretum and nature space, or will they walk away when they see we're willing to give it away? Donors and volunteers offer their hearts and souls and checkbooks to keep our Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum going, and now some people want to put a driveway through the heart and soul of the arboretum. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Diane Geldemaster, and I live at 4812 South Nicholas Avenue in Sioux Falls here. I am the executive director for the arboretum, and I'm here, I do want to thank our couple board members that spoke. You can see, there's a lot of passion in the property out there. And I would recommend, I've got a picture here that kind of shows the, they have marked out the easements out there. So I recommend that all of you, that before you take a vote, come out and hopefully, come out and look at the easement, where it's going to be going through. And I'm not sure, did you get a document that looks like this, too, for that consideration?
We received a document that looks something similar to that. I can't tell exactly. That was in our Dropbox.
Yeah, those are the three easements. So the orange is one, the yellow, another, and then the red one is the one that is the private driveway. There we go. There's the picture up there. So, so that, those are the things that you'll be considering. I spoke with Confluence this morning. They're right now currently working on a master plan for the arboretum, and they were at the meeting last week and are considering some other options. We're hoping to see those renderings pretty quickly here. But yeah, those are the three. The orange is just to kind of clean up, basically plating that road that's already being used. The yellow is that ingress/egress that the Arbor's Edge needs, and then the red is that private driveway. The private driveway, you can see on the map there that you can see those old plats from East Sioux Falls. And so you're, you can see the red goes right through the middle of what's historic East Sioux Falls. And it will cut into those, you know, that, along the creek where those properties were. And there's still a lot of historical artifacts down in there, plantings. So it's a, it's a property, I think, that you need to come and see. And I'm willing to take you out there. We've got a golf cart, and I can take you out there if you need to. And I will, you know, get to Scott Anderson, those renderings as soon as we get something. So I would just love to have you consider coming out to see it before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here today for public comment that would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Okay, that will take us into our regular business. Item 10, consider a resolution to declare a flooding disaster throughout Minnehaha County in 2019. Jason Gierman. Good morning.
Good morning. Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. And I have Reagan Smith with City of Sioux Falls Emergency Management here also today if there happen to be any questions that are directed directly at the city. So the reason I'm here today is obviously due to the weather that we've had over the last couple months. It started in March, March 13, I believe, and it's continued on through today. They haven't, haven't closed, specifically closed the date yet. So in early March, obviously, we had a significant rain event which caused the snow melt and caused significant damage in Sioux Falls with the flooding and the ice, the ice dams, so forth and so on. That continued throughout the weekend after the 13th. That continued throughout the weekend after the thirteenth, and as we went into the transition of looking to, looking for recovery after this, we received information from the National Weather Service that was not good. So what they said is, we're looking at a near-record or above-record flooding event due to the snowpack to the north of Sioux Falls and to the upcoming melting with the temperatures. So we transitioned back into Emergency Operations Center and dealt with the issues that were heading through Del Rapids, Baltic, Renner, the Sioux Valley, or the, the Big Sioux River Basin and Skunk Creek. Sioux Falls did have a significant amount of activity, sandbagging. Minnehaha County Emergency Manager in that case is, is in charge of requesting resources for the City of Sioux Falls, and obviously, the county is needed. So generally, we would probably have a specific date where this would end, and at the end of that date, we have thirty, the state has thirty days to get that information to the federal government for the disaster declaration. Now beans, we haven't really got to an end date yet, they've extended this. We're expecting it probably end this week sometime unless something else should happen. So it's been a continuing event through all this, including the ice storm that we had with the power out by Hartford, Sioux Falls, the other weekend. So what I'm here today is to declare that disaster, that Minnehaha County is a disaster, and we meet the criteria. I believe we are one of many counties, I think there are very few counties in South Dakota that have not, or are not, are intending, are not intending to. I think it's only three or four, so basically, the whole state is under a disaster declaration. Any questions?
Questions for Jason, Commissioner Benega?
I don't really have any questions, but, you know, this was one of those quote, "hundred year significant events" or whatever, which seems like we've had three or four in the last ten years or what, whatever. But I've never seen a group of people that have come together as a group that made what could have been even a lot worse, a better solution than what the city did, the county did, the townships and all the rural communities that we serve. We've heard it many, many times, that you guys have done a great job, but I think you need to hear it one more time for sure, because I don't think you could have done a better job than what you guys did, and we certainly appreciate it. And I don't think that, even if you were affected significantly by a flooding event, that you could have asked for any more help than what you guys provided. So thank you.
Yeah, we were, you know, I was blessed to have the city there and Reagan and the other people to help me through this, beans I was new in this position. Another thing to add is, you know, as we're still assessing damage, right now, I'm trying to get information from the townships to get their dollar amounts in, so we can send that off to the state. If, you know, this is for the public, if you have damage, you can certainly still report it, call two-one-one, and they will go through what they have and what we've given them to, to, to get the amounts, and then what they do is directly send them to me, and I share them with the City of Sioux Falls, as a lot of the damage to the houses is coming out of the City of Sioux Falls. So that, that's kind of where we're at right now, and working with the townships, trying to get that information together and hopefully to the state by May first.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Barth?
I, I would concur with Commissioner Benega about how everyone pulled together on this, and certainly, that includes the power companies and the highway people, the sheriffs, people, police, ambulance, everybody. At the same time, it seems like we can still try to do better as we go forward, and I wonder if we don't need to consider that we may be experiencing some climate change for one reason or another, maybe need to upgrade our, our building standards, and maybe we should emulate the city where they're purchasing some properties that are in low-lying areas. I know that, that there is a program which requires a match that we might be able to apply for as well to try to take some of these properties out. I mentioned it to the Del Rapids people the other day, and they didn't think any of those people would move. But, you know, I think, why do we need to do sandbagging every year for the same people? I, I think that's a wise move by the city, and I think, Jason, that your suggestion on this is well-taken, and that Scott's looked into it also with planning. And I think that in, in some communities, there's been an effort to go door-to-door to find out more damage and stuff, where people, maybe on the elderly tax freeze, don't necessarily respond, but they, they are experiencing huge damage. And we need to do better, but we did great.
Well, Jason, I just want to thank you again. You know, I know back in March thirteenth, we all hoped that that was a one-time incident, and then here we are, April twenty-fourth, and it still has not closed. And I know they thought they were going to close it, and then we had the ice incident. And so, and I know I look on my phone and I see lots of rain in our upcoming forecast, and there's still lots of water around. But we do appreciate what you've done, and, and I know, visiting with you, I mean, two-one-one has been a great resource for folks to be able to call in and make, and walk you through any information that you need to make a claim. I've visited with Jason a little bit, and he's been out even personally helping people that have needed the help. And so there has been a lot of people going above and beyond. I don't disagree, we can always do a little better, but I think we have really made a lot of resources available, and this is hopefully a step towards closing this flood season for two thousand and nineteen. So I appreciate you bringing this forward.
And just one thing I'd like to add is, you know, north of us is still having lots of problems, lake ponds, that, that area, the water's still rising, the houses, and of course, Nebraska and south was, is tremendously affected by all this. And, you know, right now, the majority of our township roads are in horrible, horrible shape. It's affecting the, the farmers, getting back and forth. Dairy farms are affected with the, the big trucks that have to be coming in. So, you know, there's, there's maybe not that FEMA loss, but there's that loss for these businesses that are out there in the farm community.
Good point.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to ask you to sign the Declaration of Disaster by Minnehaha County due to heavy rain, snow melt, and flooding.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks. Thanks for coming this morning. Okay, that takes us to item eleven, which is a public hearing and second reading to consider rezoning, number nineteen dash zero-one, from I-one Light Industrial District to R-one Residential District. David Heinhold, good morning.
Good morning, County Commission, David Heinhold, County Planning Department. What we have before us is rezoning nineteen dash zero-one. It's to rezone a parcel of land that's located in the unincorporated area of Rowena. That is, the address itself is four-eight-two-seven-two, South Dakota State Highway forty-two. This is located about four miles east of Sioux Falls. And the, the property request is rezoned from the I-one Light Industrial District to the R-one Residential District. This property encompasses two parcels, which is split up into two twenty-thousand-square-foot properties, which is about roughly an acre in size. The, the applicant has provided some additional detail from the Planning Commission meeting that answers some questions that neighboring property owners had, that, that have arisen as part of that Planning Commission. The minutes are provided in your packet as well, the details, some of the things that went on with that. The, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning application at the March twenty-fifth meeting, and they do have a couple of pictures that do show the site. The area is outlined in red that the applicant wants to rezone to residential. Currently, it's zoned Light Industrial, but it's, right now is being used as a residential house. As you'll see, this is the site plan that was provided by the applicant, the area outlined in yellow on the map overhead. The, and this is a picture of the house on the site as it exists today. The, just some of the background as far as adjacent properties to the immediate west of the site is a commercial property, and there is mostly residential property to the south. And then, right to the east of this house is a residential property that is being used as a daycare. And then to the immediate north, you have a Light Industrial zoned business there. And then that's on the other side of, which separates, there's trees that separate the two properties there, as you can see in this picture. So if, with that, I would answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Any questions for David? If not at this time, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this item? All right, well then I'm looking for a motion.
A motion to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to rezone this from A-one Agriculture to C Commercial.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item twelve.
Madam Chair, I, I misspoke on that, I'm sorry. I meant to say to rezone from Light Industrial to R-one Residential. I had gone ahead to item twelve on the list, and I apologize.
Second, still the same.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning from nineteen oh-one from I-one Light Industrial District to R-one Residential District. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we'll do another roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Thank you for catching that.
My apologies.
All right, so that takes us to item twelve, which is a public hearing and second reading to consider rezoning nineteen dash zero-four from A-one Agricultural District to C Commercial District. Scott Anderson.
Yes, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. This is a rezoning request to rezone approximately a quarter of an acre of property from the A-one Agriculture District to C Commercial. The property is located between Renner and Del Rapids on Highway one fifteen, also four-seventy-fifth. There, this is an expansion of an existing residential lot, or sorry, expansion of an existing commercial lot that is already on the highway. The applicant is simply asking to rezone some land on the backside of the existing commercial property, further enlarging that commercial property and probably better allowing it to be utilized in the future. This item has gone before the Planning Commission back in March, and it was recommended unanimously for approval. And so I can show you some pictures, but, you know, basically, there's just a, this empty building, or a building that's for sale on the, on the property, and then what the applicant is doing is requesting to enlarge the backside of that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about the rezoning request.
Any questions for Scott at this time? All right, if not, is there anyone here today who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone here who'd like to, is opposed to this rezoning? All right, well, it looks like we're ready for a motion then.
Madam Chair, I'll overcome my fear of speaking and suggest that we approve the Planning Commission's decision to rezone, to do the rezoning nineteen dash oh-four from A-one Agriculture to C Commercial.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. We've all verified that you correctly stated the motion, and so we'll take a roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item thirteen, and we have, we have, pleased to have a presentation on the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Cory, good morning.
I'm Cory Beatty, the executive director of the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society, and we do have a lengthy presentation, so we're just going to kind of skip through on the most important parts of this, just due to time. A lot of you know what we do already, so we just wanted to kind of come and tell you a few of our new things that we would like to have people know. Basically, the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society's one-hundredth year anniversary is coming up this year. We will be having a celebration in June, one hundred years that used, that we started as the, a mixture of, I think, the Children's Home Society and the Humane Society, where animals and children were both orphaned at the same place. So it's kind of neat to find out some of that history there. What we would like to tell you about today, basically though, is one of the biggest things that we are doing with our strategic planning is that we are starting to spay and neuter every single animal that goes out the door. It's a huge cost to us. It's a, it's kind of a risk to us also. We have hired a full-time veterinarian, we also had a part-time veterinarian. So every animal that comes in our building now will not leave until it's fixed, which is great, because it'll help us with unwanted litters, it'll help with animals running in the counties, in the cities. We do have twenty-one contracts that we have right now, so that's one of the biggest things that we'd like to report today, is that this is a very big initiative for us, and we hope that everyone is in support of that and, and stands behind us in that also. So the problems that we see mostly in our community that come in, Andy, our wonderful humane officer here, she has two other people that help her, and I'll let her speak also. In the counties mostly, people have unvaccinated animals. We have to be able to get out there, hopefully, within the next two to three months. We're starting a program where we probably will be going out to the counties and the cities that need help and do some vaccination clinics. You know, our, I guess I'd call our bucket list would be that we would go out and actually do spay-neuter in the county and have a mobile unit that does that. It's a huge wish, but we hope to get there. So the other thing that people have, they're not really educated on the ordinances, so they might have, you know, ten animals and they should only have three, or they might have, you know, a hundred and six cats, and they should probably have none. So we hope that, that we can give some education out there, because that's been a big problem for Andy and her team to go out and pick up a lot of animals and confine them, so. I'd like to have Andy report on the statistics, this is something that I think is an eye-opener, and then I'll be back to the next part.
So with the, the, the statistics, as you look at the city and county, a little over thirteen percent were actually altered. And so that leaves over eighty-six percent that are unaltered, and that's where we're, that's our, our biggest problem, because we keep getting more and more and more animals astray. And if you look at the returns, thirty-two percent of, of the animals are returned. So I think our big focus this year, thank God, is spay-neuter. Nothing leaves a building unless it's fixed. And then, then of course, education with people and finding a way to, to help the people, because I think I learned from the flooding, how important animals are, how much, how, how supportive they are. I was out there a couple times with Jason Gierman, and of all the things that you have to worry about when your, your personal belongings are floating away, you're worried about your dog and your cat. And so we addressed that, I think, really well. We talked with the communities prior to, and then we, we housed a lot of animals for people during the flooding, and they could come up and visit them, and that was, I think, really comforting for them, to know that they were taken care of. So back to the issue of spay and neuter, it's, it's important. Our, our stray rates will reduce if we, if we focus on that spaying and neutering, because if you don't have the, the male dog out there running around trying to find the female dog, you're going to have less, less problems, and you're also going to have less aggression, because we know when the, the dogs are out and about, you know, you run into that problem as well. So looking, just focusing on that primarily, we're going to reduce the amount of strays we have, and then we can focus on other things in our community.
Andy, thank you, just for the public record, could we get your first and last name?
Sure. Andy, and then A-strike.
Thank you.
And as far as everybody knows, we're not talking about people who breed animals. The significant amount of breeders that we have that are great, we're not saying that they're, they're bad. they're, they're bad people, because they do breed and they maintain breeds, hunting breeds, other breeds that are, are specific to what people want. So, we're not talking about that. We're talking about animals that come into the shelter. This is kind of a neat deal that we like to show everybody, which all of you have seen this, but it is a really good indication of what happens when animals go out of control with breeding and unwanted litters. So, that's basically why that little thing is here. One of the things that we like to show everyone too is that we're not out to make money on all of what we do. And if you look at what goes into our adoption costs, now what we do for all of the pets, we, all of their vaccinations are done, including rabies. They're fixed before they go out the door. So, basically, what happens is you're getting an animal that is completely medically taken care of for the whole next year or so. So, a lot of the costs that go into that, you know, are really something I think people should be aware of, because, you know, you might come in and get an animal for $70. Well, if you look at our costs of what it costs to do that, it really kind of shows. So, it takes a lot of money to do what we do, and we do a lot of fundraising to do that. We also, like I said, have some contract income that we use, but we think it's important to make sure that these animals go out and are done, so that we don't have to go find them later. Basically, we also do the neglect and the cruelty cases, which is kind of something that we do. One of the things I think is important to note too, is we started a program called Big Paws Canine. And what we do is we take animals up to the penitentiary for our, what we call Pearl Pups Program, which is Andy's baby. And basically, we take them up there. They get trained by inmates. And Andy's done a wonderful job in getting these animals. We have 11 or 12 up there now, hoping to get some better kennels up there. We're going to work with the prison to do so. But the inmates get a valuable resource and a job to do. And I'll just let you tell them a little bit about Big Paws, Andy.
So, Big Paws, Big Paws Canine Foundation is located in Sioux Falls, and their director out there comes to the prison a couple times a week and helps train the inmates to train the dogs. And the unique thing about this is the Pearl Pups, when you, when a dog goes to Pearl Pups, it's because it's rather unruly. And we found out that the dogs that have these little issues, being kind of on the wild side, turn out to be some of our best service dogs. There's three examples. The little gal on the right had been into three homes before she finally now is a service dog. And it just takes that consistency and training that the inmates have to get the dog where it needs to be. So, it's finding a home for even the wild ones. And it's great. It's very rewarding for the dog handlers, for our, our Humane Society, and also for the dogs themselves.
The other thing that we wanted to tell you about is another partnership that we've made with the National Search and Rescue Foundation. We have currently 16 dogs that have been trained for national search and rescue, so they're going to different disasters around the country. We just got another one out two weeks ago that will be in his national training in California, hopefully, starting next week. They're trained for not only disaster, but cadaver. They're trained for drugs, alcohol, and bombs. And so, it's really cool to see a shelter animal from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, get to that point. So, it's really a, a neat thing that I don't think a lot of people know that we do. And basically, what we really want to be at the end of the day is to be proactive about what we're doing. There's a lot that people don't understand about a humane society in general. We are a no-kill shelter. There's always definitions that are here, there, and otherwise about that. But basically, what that means is we will take in any animal of any breed and help them until they find their forever home, unless they are aggressive. We have to watch for the public. We do make sure that we watch that very carefully. They have behavior tests that, that we do that are very stringent. We will not adopt out animals that are aggressive to people or children. We also have to watch our frail cat population, which is, is really huge in the county. People have a lot of wild cats that they feed. We have to be careful. They're, they're kind of a medical risk. So, that's kind of one of the things that we're seeing, you know, go on. We also have a larger drug problem, which is also causing us some problems animal-wise. You know, with, with arrests and things going up for drugs, we also see a lot of animals come in that get confiscated at the same time. So, I have to watch medical issues with them, make sure that they're not tainted, basically, from the drugs that were made in a home, or whatever it might be. So, it's kind of one of those things that it's evolving throughout the years, and it gets different every year. We do not also breed ban. We have no breed banning. There is none allowed in our state. So, we're going to be working with some property owners that specifically try to breed ban here in Sioux Falls. We do call landlords before we adopt a people, so we make sure the landlords are okay with what they're getting. So, we're trying to be as responsible, I think, as we can. And we do appreciate the partnership we have with all of the counties and the cities. And so, if there's any questions for us, that's really what we need to tell you.
Any questions this morning? Commissioner Karski?
Just curious, that last part caught my que, caught my attention. So, if I own a large apartment complex that allows dogs, I can say, I can, will allow all dogs except Great Danes or whatever breed I don't want. That's illegal for me as a property owner to do that?
Basically, the state, there's a state law that has, that there is no breed banning in any of the cities. And this was passed, what, three years ago, I think? So, we will, service dogs always have to be allowed, no matter what breed they are, obviously, because that's just ADA requirement. But there also is some sketchy lines with that, with property owners, whether or not they can do that or not. And we're going to be working to find out what that is. We need to find out kind of where that's at. Yes, people do own properties. People do own apartments. But can they just say, no, we don't want German Shepherds and Great Danes and Chihuahuas? They can, but they should not be. And so, that's kind of where we're looking into, seeing what those lines are going to be. To be honest, I mean, we have probably more dog bites from little tiny dogs than we do the big ones. I know we do at the Humane Society. We've never had, there's been several different bites, but a lot of them are from smaller dogs, which is really kind of a surprise. So, but we will be working towards getting an understanding, I guess, maybe of that. So...
I, I think it's more too that they're referring to certain breeds, not necessarily, you know, it isn't like they're saying 50 pounds or over, or, you know, 50 pounds or under. They're, they're, when their language is particular breed.
And I think part of that too, unless they do a DNA test on an animal, they don't know what breed it really is. So, a lot of apartment complexes are making people get DNA before they, you know, they'll do a swab before they even move in, which is really responsible of them, because then they can keep their areas clean, obviously. And then, also to find out kind of what, you know, what the history of the animal might be too.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, the DNA part is of interest to me, because I know the city was doing DNA testing on some watersheds, like over on Skunk Creek. And so, they would be able to determine if it was dog, cat, rabbit, human, whatever. And, you know, in an apartment complex situation, you might know who the violators were about leaving debris around on the grass. And are people doing that?
They are. There's a lot of apartment complexes now that make every single, if they, you know, they have to pay deposits, obviously, for pets. And when they pay their deposit, they actually give them the test. It's basically just a swab, like we would do with a human. They send it in and, and get the DNA back, and they can actually match that, yes. So, it's kind of amazing how they, sort of with our microchips too, that's another one. When we microchip animals, they, they're all microchipped when we go out too. So, when they, if they get lost, we can just scan them now. And most of, all vets, pretty much everywhere have, have the scanners too. So, it just helps them to get back to where they need to be. So, and we know who owns them, we hope anyways.
Anything else? Well, thank you both for coming this morning. It's very informative. We really appreciate the work you guys do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item 14. We consider a motion to authorize the state's attorney's office to enter into a contract with Thomson Reuters for Westlaw Legal Research. Drew, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Good to see you again in short notice. Long story short, when we entered the contract, it was two weeks ago. We weren't given access to something that we were supposed to give access to, so this new contract corrects that error. Also, they threw in additional access, and the price point for the life of the contract is actually less over the three-year term, because the one-year, or increase yearly is a 1% increase instead of a 3%. So, the state's attorney's office is seeking authorization to sign that contract. And also, Commissioner Barth, just from what you noted, two weeks ago, we are starting some discussions about putting everything on one billing, because the firewall that wasn't in place a couple years ago is now in place. And they think that is an option, that we could maybe get all legal services onto one contract.
Any questions for Drew? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the, the request. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next item is to authorize chairperson to sign the stockpile land lease agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Craig Dewey, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This contract is a lease with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for six acres of land near exit 402 on Interstate 90. The Minnehaha County Highway Department has negotiated an agreement with the State Department of Transportation to use this land for storing asphalt and gravel or other aggregate while the state continues to work on a certain road project. In speaking with Travis Dresson, who is an engineer with the South Dakota Department of Transportation, he indicated that that project should wrap up at the end of 2020. So, this contract has also been sent to DJ at the Highway Department, as well as Travis with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. I would be happy to stand by and answer any questions.
Any questions for Craig this morning?
I have one here. So, do we need to authorize the chair to sign this lease, or how do we go forward?
Correct, yes. The request or motion would be for the, authorizing the chair to sign this lease.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning?
Surprise.
Commissioner Barth?
We had, Dean and I had a meeting yesterday with the Multicultural Intergovernmental Board, and it was a very favorable meeting, I would say. One aspect is Christie over there is planning to apply for grant money to help with some of the infrastructure, which of course, is county property. And she's working with Mark Krenz on that. And I didn't think we would have any objection to her applying for grant money from the Deadwood Foundation.
Correct.
And other than that, I would say that they have a huge number of events, and they'd love to have us all participate and come.
Yeah, I'll just put in a plug for them too. They have an event facility that's open for public rental. So, if somebody's planning a large family reunion, a wedding, the roller dolls use it, et cetera, et cetera, just, they're trying to get the word out, so I'll just put a plug in for them that, hey, if you need a, you need an event or venue, think about the Multicultural Center.
I just would add that I know Christie, Christie's on the Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, and she's done a really good job of being plugged in and helping the chamber go out and increase their diversity of their membership. And, and in fact, tomorrow, we are having Ethiopian food from a new Ethiopian restaurant that Christie facilitated that relationship. So, and now, they do very important work. So, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys attending that meeting and the work they do. Commissioner Barth?
So, another one, if I may. We had a meeting last night of the Planning Commission. We got out of here at 10 is, 10 o'clock or so. But we, it was a joint meeting of the city and county, and we had a Board of Adjustment meeting and a, just a county meeting. So, three meetings, sitting in the same chair. We, we declined to do a, an adjustment out at the Yogi Bear Campground, where they wanted to build a building too close to the, the exit ramp. We deferred a couple of other things, but it was a full room again. We were, I don't, I don't know, there was 68 people or so, I counted.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you to all the folks on that, that sit on that committee. You guys have been putting in long hours.
One more comment on that?
Yes.
We also looked at some potential revisions to our county ordinances on signage. There's been some court decisions that have made restrictions on signs a little bit more, more difficult. But, and there are a lot of signs we don't even think about that are out there that would fall under these regulations. And anyway, that will come to the commission in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Item 17, new business. Any new business? Any old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess our meeting.
That's my motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll reconvene in about 10 minutes, about 10:15. Thank you.